Call our village board meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Beach Park Village Board, March 11th at seven o'clock, and we are starting at seven o'clock, which is quite unique of late. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Rusty Gust.
Here.
Rusty Jensen.
Here.
Rusty Miller.
Here.
Rusty Addison.
Here.
Rusty Sittick.
Here.
Rusty Wells is absent. Attorney Ferolo.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
Here.
And Clerk McDonald is present.
All right, well, this is one of the my favorite times because everybody gets to look at the back of me. And now it's time for the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
All right, moving on to item two is our public comment on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to comment on our agenda tonight? All right, hearing none. We will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for anyone that wishes to address the board on any and all topics. Next up, we have our consent agenda that contains the following. The approval of the village board regular meeting minutes from February 25th, 2021. Bill is presented for payment, the amount of $236,024.55 and the community development department monthly report for February 2021. Anything the board would have considered separately? Not hearing any motions. I would accept a motion to approve this consent.
No move, Mayor, from Rich Gus.
Second, Miller.
We have a motion by trustee Gus, second by trustee Miller. Discussion. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Rusty Gust.
Here. Rusty. All right, I'm sorry.
Rusty Jensen.
That's a little funny.
Rusty Miller.
Hi.
Rusty Addison.
Hi.
Rusty Sittick.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. I've got nothing tonight for mayor's report. Moving on to reports from trustees. First up, we have trustee Jensen. What have you got for us tonight, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. First is a reminder that our our monthly finance committee report will take place or report meeting will take place on the 17th of March, 6:00 PM virtually. And the topic, the main topic will be budget workshop. We're continuing to work on the on the budget for the next fiscal year. The second item that I have is a resolution. And this is a resolution, and I'm offering this as as a motion, by the way. Resolution updating the investment policy for the Village Beach Park. And by way of discussion or explanation, if you look at the cover sheet, this is primarily housekeeping. It's an annual process. There have been a couple of changes that were in the red line version that are in the in the packet. The main change is lip service to the Illinois Sustainable Investment Act and which requires us to consider sustainability in our investment policy, which we will consider. But hopefully, we will pay more attention to security and return on investment. So there you go. There's my motion and my speech.
All right. We have motion by trustee Jensen and a second by trustee Miller. Discussion. All right, with clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Jensen.
All right.
Rusty Miller.
Hi.
Rusty Addison.
Hi.
Rusty Sittick.
Hi.
Rusty Gus.
Hi.
Motion carries, and what is the resolution number?
Number three.
All right.
That concludes our report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Trustee Gust, what have you got for us tonight?
I wish I had about a two hour speech, but I don't have anything other than hopefully next Wednesday, you'll see the little green man walking around town. Going to Creekstone Rice, and I want to stop at a few places, so hopefully can make a few funnies that day.
There you go.
After that, I do not have nothing, sir.
All right.
Is that like a warning if we see the little green man? Are we supposed to call the authorities or what?
Oh, I forgot, Mark. I forgot, Mark. I wasn't talking to you about that. Everybody but that that man.
All right, thank you.
I think it's Patrick's Day, he gets a pass.
He gets a pass.
It's when he like.
Mark, you see the little green man if you have too much of the green beer.
That's true.
That we won't have to worry about.
All right.
You're gonna buy me one?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Next up, planning zoning, planning building zoning committee. Trustee Wells is not with us tonight. We have a resolution, which is an annual resolution again, house some housekeeping for approval of the zoning map. Again, this is a rather perfunctory is I don't believe there were any significant changes, no annexations, no annexations, and all the zoning changes that we've had have mainly been either text amendments or conditional uses, that type of thing. So it's here for your consideration tonight, and I would accept a motion to approve it.
I'll give you that.
No move, Mayor.
I have a motion by trustee Jensen. Did I hear a second from trustee Gust?
Yes.
All right, discussion?
I just have one curiosity. Who do we maintain this document internally? This it's a pretty fancy looking map. I was just wondering if that was an internal product or we hired that done or how we how we update that?
From the planners.
I believe Ralph Campbell is still been they've been kind of they started way back when and built the base map and everything off the county's maps. And then they just do an annual update or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other discussion?
It's a map that's meant to be read with a magnifying glass.
Yeah.
You can zoom in.
That's right.
All you have to do is put your fingers on it like this and then spread them apart and it gets bigger. I hope I'm not the only person that's looked at a magazine or something and started to do that and then realized it's.
It's a.
Did I just admit that out loud?
I think you did.
Oh, boy.
Duly noted.
Okay, all right, well, would the clerk please call the roll?
Rusty Miller.
Hi.
Rusty Addison.
Hi.
Rusty Sittick.
Hi.
Rusty Gus.
Hi.
Rusty Jensen.
Hi.
Motion carries, that's resolution number four. Moving on, we have trustee Miller.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Your Honor. I just have one thing I wanted to draw the board's attention to. Some some of the board has already heard this in public works the other night, but I've noticed that the IDNR has finally and thankfully demolished the old camp store that's down at the Illinois Beach State Park. And there is a new facility that's been being worked on for quite some time to the north of the parking lot. I guess this is going to be not only a camp store, but you know, facilities for campers and possibly beachgoers. This is all good for beach park, you know, especially with the businesses that we have right on the access entrance to the state park. So the better job they do with restoration of the beach, the better it is for us in the long run.
Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, and I think those plans were actually delayed a little bit. My recollection is they were they were planning on having that done last year. Primarily the new construction, the camp store, I think they were somebody might have been hoping that the waves would take it, but either way, it was it was mostly gone before they started. All right, great. Public Safety Committee, trustee Sittick.
Thank you, thank you. Is the fire chief or the sheriff's office with us this evening?
We have both.
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, okay. I'd like to find out if they have anything that they would like to report for us.
Nothing from the fire chief. Lieutenant, did you have anything for us tonight?
No, other than I think the board probably saw the news that went out last week on the arrest of the second individual who was charged in connection with the double homicide that occurred on Wadsworth Road. That was a very good collaboration between our office, Waukegan Police and Gurnee Police, and both the individuals involved will now be held accountable. We do not believe anybody else was involved in this double homicide. So we're very hopeful that the family, you know, obviously closure, it's a hard thing to achieve when two of your loved ones are brutally murdered, but at least can take the first steps towards justice. On another note, we continue very thorough patrols on Sheridan Road, Lewis on speed enforcement, traffic enforcement. You probably saw we we charged an individual last week as well with driving 112 miles an hour on Sheridan, who was under the influence of drugs. So we certainly are taking your feedback in areas you want us to increase or watch out for and putting our deputies there to make sure that the beach park community is kept safe.
Yeah, I think my my personal observation is that I've noticed an increase in how aggressive people are driving even just over the last 12 months. And I don't know if it's frustration with, you know, other world events and and the like, but it's it's crazy. I watched a guy just cut a semi truck off and just like it was, you know, get out of my way. And so, you know, and that's on Wadsworth Road, you know, there's not a lot of room to maneuver there. So you just people just need to just take a breath and stop looking at their phones.
Absolutely, Mayor, and we've we've seen that countywide. It's not unique to beach park by any means, and a lot of it, we believe, has to do with there being a lighter traffic load on the roadways and it just it increased for whatever reason, whatever psychological reason, it increases some individuals' desire to drive fast and aggressively. So, yeah, you've seen we've seen significant speed increases countywide, and we're really trying to keep our rap on that.
Yep, well, it's good that we're nabbing a bunch of them here and and continue to be amazed at some of the speeds and the conditions under which that they're they're getting arrested, that it's not just necessarily under the influence, under the influence plus drugs and possible distribution and all the rest of the stuff that goes with it. It's like, boy, you know, I guess you don't have to be smart to be a criminal.
I believe that report also said he was driving without insurance. Yeah, why wouldn't you drive 112 miles an hour when you're stoned?
Exactly.
You know, there's something else I've noticed just in traveling York House Road. There's a lot of feeder streets that pass cars to York House Road. And you know, it's incredible, the people just don't even stop. They they just roll right through the stop sign out onto the road if there's room enough to do it. It's like the stop signs are invisible. So that's another new hazard, I think, to be aware of.
Yep.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Thank you very, very much. And I think that is all we have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, moving on, Public Works Committee, trustee Addison, what have you got tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There we have a resolution. We're attempting to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County Stormwater Management for a stream cleanup, stream bank stabilization type project in the Bull Creek in the vicinity of Manor Avenue. This is a project we've applied several times and gotten these matching fund grants. It's a 50/50 match up to $20,000, so we it's a $40,000 project. And when it's completed after inspection, the SMC will reimburse us for $20,000 of that 40. So I would make a motion that we approve resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Lake County Stormwater Management Commission in the Bull Creek and Manor Stream Bank Stream Bank Maintenance Project.
I will second that, Mayor.
We have a motion by trustee Addison and a second by trustee Gust. Discussion. I might point out that with the recent dissolution of the Beach Park Drainage Districts, we this is just another example of what we've been doing all along in in the same realm as what the 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 drainage district had as their purview, but had not inadequate funding to do anything significant with. So it's this is just an example of another day at Beach Park. It's what we do. It's how we do it, and partnering with Stormwater Management is just has a doubling effect there, so.
And this would have been in the jurisdiction of the Beach Park Drainage District, and we did get a portion of their bank account balance when that agency or was resolved. So I mean, technically, you could look at this as being that money being applied towards a project that would have been under their.
Yep.
You know, work, so.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question. Do we have any who's going to control like the work, like is there going to be bids going out for this? Will SC control that?
No, no, that would be us controlling. We're responsible for the project. At the end, we get it inspected by SMC and they would reimburse us for half of the cost up to $20,000. I'm not sure if this has gone out to bid yet or if we're going to do a portion of the work.
It has not gone out to bid.
It will be going out to bid. So in the under scope of work, there is a clause that says the village shall hire all consultants and or contractors and procure all materials and or equipment necessary to complete the project. So it's on us and they will match, you know, they will pay half of the project at the end.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? All right, ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Rusty Addison.
Hi.
Rusty Sittick.
Hi.
Rusty Gus.
Hi. Hi.
Rusty Miller.
Hi.
Motion carries, and that is resolution five.
Thank you.
All right, I wanted to comment on how well this last couple of weeks the Public Works Department did in getting rid of all the snow.
Yeah.
It's quite amazing to think that, you know, it was just a couple of weeks ago, we had mountains and mountains of snow, and now it's all gone. I can only assume it was by the hand of Public Works.
Well, Pat went to a seminar and picked up some, you know, best practices type of knowledge, and it worked well.
That's good. Well, more more power to them. Keep it up. All right. Next up, we have the TIF Committee Report, which I chair. We have a resolution tonight, which is authorizing the execution of a contract with James J. Benis and Associates for Phase One Engineering and Consulting Services for the Sheridan Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvements pedestrian improvements in an amount not to exceed $95,931. This is a result of our initial work on the regional intermodal multimodal transportation study that was done for pedestrian and bicycle ways throughout the North Shore. And this is the kind of the next step. This is the design and and getting us, I guess, fair to say, to the point of being having a project in hand that we could put out to bid and take it from there. So this is the this is the next step, if I could say it that way. We did discussion at the TIF Committee. The TIF Committee did recommend proceeding, and we have it here tonight for the board's consideration. I guess I would ask first if we have a motion to approve.
No move, Miller.
We have a motion by trustee Miller. Second by trustee Sittick. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
In reviewing the contract, there's a proposal attached as Exhibit A. In the proposal and the condition specifically, C and H identifies venue for any court claims as being appropriate in DuPage County. I would ask that the maker of the motion consider amending the motion to condition approval upon venue being changed in Section C and H of the proposal from DuPage County to Lake County.
Okay.
I think we better do that.
It seems reasonable.
I would need to amend the motion per attorney's verbiage in far as changes to Section C and Section H.
Correct. And if we get a second to the amendment.
Second by Sittick.
Okay, so we have amended the motion to include the change of venue from DuPage County to Lake County. Otherwise, that was the extent of the legal.
Yeah, that's correct. Everything else looked fine.
Okay, other discussion?
Mayor, Jensen here, I had a question regarding the actual agreement itself. Now, I don't the 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 appendices that the attorney referenced, I don't think I have in my packet the full language, but I'm looking under under Article One Description of Services. I really don't, there's not a lot in term in terms of what the deliverables are we're paying for. The scope of service is not really well defined in in A through E and that in Section One Decimal One. And I'm wondering if maybe I've missed it. I see them in in the attached documents, which aren't part of the agreement, as far as I read it, project understanding.
Exhibit A is a part of the agreement, trustee Jensen.
Is that part is that is this is this part of Exhibit A, attorney?
Yes, sir.
I see Exhibit A is a single page.
Exhibit A.
Qualifications follows. Is that is that part of?
Exhibit A includes the statement of qualifications, the proposal for Sheridan Road Bicycle and pedestrian improvements, et cetera. So.
Okay, I didn't I didn't I didn't read it to be that. I thought those are merely additional information. Okay, so we do have some scope here in in the estimate of man hours and so forth. That that does break down what we're entitled to a little bit better. Okay, that that satisfies my question. I would like to express my reservations about this, Mayor. This is going to be a difficult vote for me because, as you know, I've been a strong proponent of safety improvements along Sheridan Road. But I see this as $100,000 investment that doesn't get us a single square of concrete or asphalt. It I looked up the the estimates as I practically looked for my notes, the estimates from the Lakeshore website, the website, yeah. The beach park, the all in estimate is $24.3 million for the grand plan, of which if we pay 20%, 4.86 that we don't have, if we only have to pay 10%, it's 2.43, which we don't have. This this is a lot grander plan than 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 we had envisioned. If you go back to the October 2020 TIF Committee, I have the memorandum in hand here, the linear foot for the eight foot walkway, $180, $210,000 your estimate for that. Five foot, which I also want to put on the other side, $45 linear foot, $760,000. This is a lot more than it does more than we need. I think it's a Cadillac plan that designers come from that perspective rather than the practical, simple safety improvement approach that I'd like to see. So I'm going to reluctantly vote no on this, and those are my reasons.
Sure, I appreciate that. And ever the voice of conservative spending and watching the budget for sure, Dan, I appreciate that. I would only add that this does not bind us to the Cadillac plan. This gets us to the point of being able to make the determination of what is going to make the most sense. So much is unknown at this point with this this the regional plan. That's kind of the the wish list. This is more of the, if I could say, winnowing down the reality of, you know, how much would we need to acquire, how much right of way can be used as it is? And, you know, where are we going to encounter, you know, other obstacles or wetlands or utilities or what have you that all kind of comes into this phase one engineering evaluation? And I think at the end of the day, we'll end up with something significantly less than the ideal. But because we're working predominantly in the state of Illinois, I dot right of way, we know that their engineering standards are are tight. And I just know with the little bit of path that we did install from Beach Road South, you know, we were having to redo approaches, driveway approaches, and that because the slope didn't match the standards. And, you know, all we wanted to do is put a path in. And as a result of that path, you know, we're putting new entrances into businesses and all the rest because it has to meet their standards. So I kind of wish we could go back to the days of just just build it, you know, it'll work, but we're not at that anymore. So I definitely support moving ahead. I know this is a lot of money and of course, we're not going to get anywhere without the phase one engineering. So that's where I'm at on it, and I'm happy to hear any other conversation on the on the resolution.
Well, I'll just say that this this has been a something we've talked about a lot. Obviously, just tonight, we've already talked about this with the report from Sheriff's Department about traffic enforcement on Sheridan Road. We've been dealing with this for a long time. When Andrew put together the proposal going after the grant money or, you know, with the conglomeration for the connectivity program, he did include some pictorial exhibits that showed all of the pedestrian accidents that there is. Yeah, and in the north, the north segment and south segment together, there's 10 instances where pedestrians or people on bikes were hit by cars. Two of them were fatalities. So that's the reason that we've seen this as a as a priority for so long. That was in a four year period between 2014 and 2018. We have spent spent a significant amount of money putting in lights. I believe we put 24 light fixtures along Sheridan Road between York House and kind of by Emily's Restaurant area. There was a there was a there was a serious lack of lighting in there, and I think that's made an improvement, too. But like like you said, Mayor, you can't just go to I dot and say we're going to build a path. You have to have a plan in hand and submit it to them. And no, we did have quite a bit of discussion about this. Is it absolutely necessary to have a path on both sides of the road? Maybe we can just do one rather than both and, you know, cut the cost quite a bit. But if the whole thing is on on paper and in writing, when we present it to I dot, then it is what it is, you know, so we can whittle that down. It is a tough pill to swallow, the amount of money that it would be, but there may be other grant opportunities coming up with these alleged handouts that people are dreaming about and federal level or whatever else. So it'd be nice for it to be a shovel ready type program because we've got a plan in place and take it from there.
Okay.
Yeah, I put on this as a means to an end. You know, I we're moving, we're moving forward, you know, like other trustees have said, this has been a real critical issue for us and for our residents for the last couple of years. You know, this is money that's going to come out of our Sheridan Road tip. You know, what better use at this point? I know it doesn't get the job done, but it gets us one step closer to getting the job done. So I'm okay.
All right.
We have to start somewhere.
Yep.
Right.
All right, well, then unless there's any other conversation, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Rusty Sittick.
Hi.
Rusty Gus.
Hi.
Rusty Jensen.
Oh, excuse me, no.
Rusty Miller.
Hi.
Rusty Addison.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. All right. Thank you. Moving on to staff reports, looks like we're going to hear a little bit about the Looks like we're going to hear a little bit about the pavement management study. I'll turn it over to our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board of Trustees, Adrian, I have to recognize him, our Marquez Republic Works Director has been doing a lion's share of the work and that we were fortunate enough to have CMAP offer the village the opportunity to do pavement management study and, and with their consultants and provide the village with condition ratings for all of the village roads, as well as an opportunity going forward in the future to try and program the resources and types of repair, providing us with software in order to keep up with that mission going forward. So with that, we do have CMAP and their consultants here. I'll, I'd like to introduce Joe Stefanski. He's the top middle of year screen mayor. I don't know how everybody else is screened, but introduce him from CMAP. And he can introduce his team and make the presentation to us on the results of their study. Hi, Joe. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Adrian. Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Thank you for your time tonight and especially to allow us to do this virtually is, is pretty cool. All right. Well, again, my name is Joe Stefanski. I'll be presenting the results of the pavement management system implementation. I work for ARA. We're in Champaign, just a bit downstate. And Lax is on the call, Shaheedal and Shrew is on the call, and I were fortunate enough to get an opportunity to work on this project. And then again, thank you to Mark. Thank you to Adrian with the village for helping through all the emails that we had, the phone calls, the meetings, to provide all the information that during the project that we used to develop the findings that we're showing, I'll be presenting today. All right, next slide. Just a little bit of background, Mark kind of mentioned this process started with an RFQ from CMAP. CMS working to bring pavement management to agencies in the CMAP region. So thank you to Todd Schmidt and Jose Rodriguez, who's on the call, who we have been working with from CMAP. And also to both of them who are on the call, thank you to Avos Kachwali and Bridget Malinowski from AECOM. AECOM was selected by CMAP to assist the vendors as well as bring some management oversight to the project. And then finally, we were, ARA was selected by CMAP as one of the vendors for the project. And we were assigned to work with the Village of Beach Park to create a pavement management plan for the Public Works Department. Okay. All right. So first off, what do we mean when we say pavement management? The goals of pavement management are an objective, data-driven approach to help a community make decisions on what treatments, when to do them and where to do them. Pavement management stresses a benefit cost selection of projects. It prioritizes keeping good roads in good condition through the use of preservation activities that start especially early in, in a pavement's life. As opposed to what is traditionally used in our world, which is that a worst-first approach. Where essentially we're working on the worst roads at any given time. If we look at that example performance model graph in the middle of the slide pavement performance model, one of the reasons we use benefit cost is because we see a nonlinear relationship of a pavement deterioration over time. As you can see with that black line, in the middle of a pavement's life, cracking starts to propagate on the surface. Water gets down into those lower layers of the pavement. And through, as you guys, I'm sure I know, our wonderful freeze saw cycles that we have here in the Midwest. Those underlying layers and the foundation of our structure becomes compromised. And this leads to accelerated deterioration and ultimately costly repairs. So if you think about it, by applying maintenance, lighter, less expensive treatments before we go down that roller coaster, we can protect that pavement in good condition and hold off that deterioration longer. So essentially pavement management wants to preserve that structure before it hits that falling knife part of the graph. So for the whole process, starting in the upper left oval, we start with data collection across the network. We use that information to rate the condition of the surface. We use that condition information to calibrate a performance model like that example graph to predict future conditions on the network. We work with the agency to define the treatments that were going to be considered. The budget information, we use all that information to run a maintenance and rehab or M and R optimization routine. Typically, that's done in software and ultimately develop a capital improvement plan. All right. All right. So we started the project with data collection. For this project, we use a laser crack measurement system or LCMS. You can see in those pictures. The laser information is processed to identify the location, the severity, as well as the type of crack. And ultimately, we aggregate that information into a pavement rating. And since this process is automated with some manual QC to gut check the results, we can do a one hundred percent survey coverage of the pavement that we drove over as opposed to a sample-based method that's typically for a more manual foot-on-ground method. All right. All right. For the payments, pavement ratings for this project, CMAP chose PCI. It's a national SCM standard. The PCI ranges from zero to a hundred. You can see some subjective qualitative names for the given PCI score. And in addition, the, these pictures can start to give you an example of some PCI scores and what they might look like. So starting in the upper left-hand corner, that ninety to a hundred PCI range, those are, you know, your new pavements. You work your way down to the eighties and seventies. That's where we're using crack sealing, light patching. PCI, once we get below that into PCIs in the sixties and fifties, those are indicative of pavements where we want to treat those with surface treatments, thin overlays. And this, in this area, this is many times, these pavements still don't appear to need attention. But this is the time we want to catch those pavements before that falling knife part of that graph. Once we transition below that to the forties and down, we've likely lost the lower layers of the pavement. We've lost too much integrity. And we can no longer preserve that pavement structure with less expensive techniques. At that point, we need a major rehabilitation. All right. Right. And here is an example of the information collected. The right-of-way pictures there on the left, we take those every twenty feet. And the LCMS, the laser information on the, on the right is taken continuously. You can see the automated information is overlaid on that laser scan showing the location as well as the severity via the color, as well as some distress type information in the form of those boxes there. And all this information, including those pictures, those laser scans, we did provide that to the village on an external hard drive with a spreadsheet to help navigate through that information. All right. All right. So here are the condition assessment results. The average PCI was about a fifty. This is based on the collection that we performed last fall, fall twenty twenty. Your average pavement is in that poor condition. You guys are not special. This is pretty typical for what we see on local roads. But we do think that this plan that, that Adrian and Mark and folks have helped to develop here can and will improve this. And that score, that PCI score, that network average is, it's important to keep track of that over time. So you can see if you're improving or, you know, deteriorating over, over time. All right. All right. So we take that condition information and we put it into a pavement management software. For this project, CMAP chose Paver. It's a nationally recognized pavement management software. We put all the network location information in, the condition, information, age, treatments, treatment unit cost, traffic, as well as the budget information. And the software runs the analysis and outputs a plan. CMAP did offer the village with a one-year license for this software. And just to note, once, once that is purchased, it doesn't expire and there is no annual fee. And CMAP also provided software training, which we led, and we actually had several folks from, from Beach Park attend. So thank you. All right. More detail on the inputs to the software. The pavement performance model on the upper left, that's calibrated using your condition information that was collected, those points on that graph. On the right, you can see how the treatments are chosen, including the, the PCI and the roadway functional class ranges where treatments are feasible. And then the lower left, you can see that budget information that we programmed into the software with Mark and Adrian's help. All right. Okay. So with all that information imported and ready in the Paver software, we ran multiple budget scenarios. First, the expected funding as well as others that were budget-driven, say, increase or decrease from the, that expected value as well as scenarios that are target-driven. So say, we want to increase to a higher PCI or maintain our current PCI. We can see the funding person, person air on the left, showing how much is spent each year. This chart on the right is showing how much was desired by each scenario for those major M and R projects. AK projects that were feasible but had to be delayed because we didn't have enough funding in that particular scenario's goals. All right. And with each scenario comes that predicted condition over period. And I guess zero in, you can compare that maintain current funding, that dark blue line, the maintain current condition line, that green line. They are diverging a bit and the PCI is definitely decreasing over time with that expected or with that current funding. And that really, that tells us that we, we have an underfunded road program. And over time, we would expect the roadway network to deteriorate without additional funding. All right. So again, the results, the analysis of results for each scenario. For each scenario, that first column is that total ten-year budget available for that scenario. The second column is how much major M and R work was left out that Paver wanted to do for that scenario. That third column is the total needed for that ten-year budget for that scenario. So those A plus B type of thing. And then that fourth column would be the PCI at the end of the analysis period for each scenario, given that budget in the first column. Again, just to drive this point home, you compare that maintain current condition, that maintain current funding. That maintain current funding is really showing a deteriorating, deteriorating network over that ten-year purity. Even that increased, increased funding scenario is, is, is dropping over that analysis period. So we're really leaving too many deemed necessary projects off that plan. Okay. All right. And here is the plan out of the software. So this is the current funding scenario. So over ten years, this is where the program is saying to do work, color-coded by the year. You can see that chart on the right, that the program is balancing the budget to provide a nice level spending over the analysis period, those, those green bars. But because there are different treatments recommended in each year, the number of nails does vary from, from year to year, those, those blue bars. And I should mention, we did provide the populated Paver database to the village. Contains all these scenarios that we ran, so they can be updated and reran in the future. Okay. So again, the analysis results by year, this is for the current funding. This time, we're looking at the distribution of the within each of those PCI qualitative ranges for each year. You can see those, especially those, those gray roads, the, the failed category. We're just increasing that way too high by, by the end of the analysis period. Okay. Okay. So to preface, these numbers are not from the village. They're, they're just samples. But what do we get from doing all of this? Well, we found you by using pavement management techniques over the life of a pavement, an agency can save money and make their pavements last longer. The goal is to stop using that worst-first approach where the roads we work on are the ones that look the worst. With the preventative maintenance approach, just like we brush our teeths, we put oil in our cars, we use more proactive treatments when things are still running smoothly. And doing this, we can yield a lower unit cost to maintain that roadway through, throughout its life and make best use of taxpayer dollars. All right. So in addition to the future predictive analysis planning, Paver also uses the distresses that we captured during the condition assessment to directly estimate the amount of maintenance recommended. And as well as you can see, it, it shows you the consequence or the benefit of doing that as well as giving you the amounts of maintenance per segment. So all this information can be very useful for planning as well as cost, cost, excuse me, cost estimating. All right. All right. And finally, recommendations, takeaways from the project. Include or increase the use of pavement preservation techniques such as crack sealing, patching, thin overlays on your network. Keep your pavement management system updated in the Paver software. Each year, go into the software, enter the actual project work that was done in that year before. Rerun that analysis, rerun those scenarios and update that capital improvement plan. Consider adding structural testing to get a better idea of the health of the underlying layers of your pavement. And lastly, because we know the accuracy of the condition predictions does erode over time, we do recommend performing an updated pavement condition inspection every three to five years or so. And if you do all these things, we think it'll yield and support a healthy pavement management program for the village. That's all we had today. Thank you again.
Well, that was a whole lot of information. And I think as, as always is the case, there's, there's always more work than resources to, to accomplish. And it would have been interesting to have had ten years of data coming into this to, to see, you know, to prove out the, the model, so to speak, as to condition. That's always going to be a challenge when you start with fresh information. Well, I guess we have an opportunity here for questions for.
I have one there.
Go right ahead, trustee Jensen.
Joe, I didn't notice, perhaps I missed, do you factor in, into the, the failure projection? Do you factor in the type of road? Is it a primary road, a secondary, a neighborhood road, or is that, you're strictly looking at pavement condition?
We do factor in the functional class and essentially what's that, what is that used for? It's to maybe accelerate or beef up the attention that is given to that particular roadway. There's no one answer to that question of how, of what the answer is. Some agencies want to stress residential at the same level as their, their higher functional class roads and others, you know, want to keep those, you know, farm-to-market roads or, you know, business routes more up to a higher level. But yes, we do consider that.
Well, the reason I ask, I'm, I'm always looking for the silver lining and, and thinking perhaps the, the projection might be a little bit pessimistic for less heavily, heavily traveled roads, which most of ours are, than those that have a lot more traffic.
Absolutely. Yep. And certainly the, the roads, the lower the speed limits, you know, you can accept some more deterioration, you know. If, if there's a, a highly distressed road and the speed limit is, you know, thirty miles an hour, you certainly don't notice that.
And, and heavy vehicles too, which the heaviest ones we've got in our residential streets are the weekly garbage pickup and a school bus maybe, but we don't have semis going up and down our neighborhood streets regularly.
Yep.
I have a question. I have a question for Joe. You talked about preventive maintenance and I think you included crack sealing in that. Is there a, like a rule of thumb for cracks? I mean, are they recommended to be sealed when there are a certain width or length or, you know, what, what, how, how is that decided? Or is any time you see a crack, seal it?
I mean, it's probably the, the last statement that you said, you know, we really want to hit those cracks with crack seal before they have been there for a while and water has had a chance to get down in them. That would be the simplest answer. You know, how feasible is that? You know, maybe not, but you know, you know, after the first year or two, you know, that's. you know, after the first year or two, you know, that, that's not a bad time to start looking, you know, around for, you know, the low hanging fruit of where can I hit, you know, cracks? Because once we start seeing those spidering, you know, outwards from those cracks, you know, we, we can't really maintain those. You can't stop the water. The only thing that crack seal is doing is stopping the water from getting down and waiting for those free saw cycles in the winter to crack up that pavement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I, I'd just like to say, like, like the mayor said, it is a lot of really good information. Our program, as with most communities, I believe, we have pretty much done the worst first philosophy, the streets that are in the worst condition, fix them first, because that's, I think, probably pretty, the most common. We've also every year done crack sealing where it's been identified. You know, we try and take a look at the demographics and not have little patches, all, all corners of the village to minimize mobilization costs, you know, with the contractors. But, you know, there was a time when we first started discussing this, that all it was, was well, do you want to be on a 20 year replacement cycle or do you want to be on a 30 year replacement cycle for your streets? And, you know, we've kind of been more along the 25 to 30 end of it, just because of funding. And in the last four or five years, we've ramped that up and we're spending, you know, like the, like the report showed in the 800 to $900,000 a year range. So I think with technology improving, obviously, we didn't have the fancy laser van to use back then. So we, you know, after winter time, all the roads that were badly cracked in the fall are now missing in the spring because they're in everybody's front yards because the plows pushed on. So, so we've, you know, kind of addressed it that way, you know, off, out of necessity. So that, this is good information. I'm glad to hear that several people went to the training for the software so we can utilize it best we can as the money is available and keep plowing forward that way. So it is, like I said, a lot of really good information and we'll give her a shot if we can, somebody's rich uncle comes along. We'll dive in headfirst. Thank you.
Very good. All right.
Uncle Joe just signed that today, so we should be okay.
Yep, piece of cake.
Yeah, don't get me started. That's, that's not a rich uncle.
Well, you know, if, if everyone in the village would just forward those stimulus checks to the village, we could do a heck of a paving program.
Not a bad idea. Let's put it out there on social media and see how it goes.
Maybe we could wait till after April 6th.
Keep it off of social media, till after April.
Once again, did I say that out loud? I, this is recorded, oh boy. All right, any other questions for our presenters?
Thank you to staff, to Mark and to Andrew, and thank you to everybody from CMAP. Really appreciate this. Thank you so much.
Now it's up to us to figure out the best path and plans. And, and I do like the idea of an ongoing evaluation. You know, a snapshot in time is just that. And, you know, if, if we, through our due diligence and the public works management of, of these programs, can come back in, in five years and say, all right, here's where we are today. Are we better? Are we worse? You know, we spent X. Maybe there's some new technology that comes along in the meantime that allows us to be more efficient. I know we, we did the thin overlay, I think it was chip and seal on a couple of streets. I don't know that I'll advocate for that again because that was almost, we, we had a lot of complaints from the subdivision where we, we did a sample street there and, and people tracking the debris and, and.
I think with that one, we learned that it's a good process in an area with ditches.
Yep.
And not the best in an area with curb and gutter because it has nowhere to go and, so.
We did have a, that was one, one lesson learned, yeah. But I think all of, all of the above and the management of that information is going to be the, the real win for us, so. All right, well, thank you all and Joe, excellent presentation and how to make pavement interesting.
All the bright colors do help.
I mean, seriously, seriously. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you again.
All right. Well, let's see, anything else from staff tonight?
No, nothing else, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We have no old or new business that I'm aware of. Does anyone have new business for the good of the group? All right, we'll move on to item nine. Citizens wishing to address the board about any and all topics.
Yes, here, Bob Johnson.
Hello, Mr. Johnson.
Hi, how are you tonight?
Doing well and I, I'm glad to hear your voice. What have you got for us tonight, sir?
Oh, I want to just to tell you that I really appreciate the job that Beach Park snowplowers do for us to keep our roads open and keep them in good shape. So them guys do a heck of a good job. Anyway, I'm proud of that to be able to live in this community where they take care of the roads. But my, I tried to get in before you and talk about the agenda in regards to the phase one engineering consulting services for Sherwood Bicycle Path and Producers. One of the things that I have noticed, now I, I heard tonight that they put 24 lights in from York House down. But if you drive over there at night, they must have forgot to turn some of them on because it gets awful dark over there. Anyway, the fact is, I think it's a little overkill for 95,931 dollars for the, just to tell us what we have to do because it's on the Illinois right away. But the other question I had is why most places, even on the state highway, the sidewalks go right to, start at the curb and move. And that means that if a parking lot is in good shape and it has the correct entries and exits, then why do we have to have grass? That just adds more monies to maintaining what's there. I mean, I take a look at the small amount of work that was done over there for the bicycle path over on beach and Sherwood. You know, that's, that's, that was a catastrophe. It looks terrible. And they had to redo things and on the other side of the road, yeah, sure, over by the trailer park. That looks good, except I don't know why they have to go have grass over there. Why not put the sidewalk right to the curb? In most places, you, where the state highway passes through, where there's businesses, the sidewalks are right against the curbs. So, and besides that, any place where they have already a, it black topped and it, and it looks good or it's concrete and it looks good, just stripe it off and, and put your insignias on there for bicycle path and a walkway. Anyway, the other thing now, after bringing it up now, and you had this, this report, this staff report, I want to make you aware of a few things. When they did, redid the, resurfaced the street on Howard between Loyola and, and Wilson, I had contacted the village and the highway, the old crew, the, the road people, and made them aware that when they do that, they better be careful because there's underground stream underneath on, on Howard. Well, sure enough, when they came through with their loaded truck checking after they had finished the resurfacing and everything, guess what? They had to come back and tear it all up again. But they gotta know things like that. I've lived here when it was Benton Township. I've been here 84 years. Anyway, I know a lot about the roads too. And the fellow that was in charge of the Benton Township, the roads, all of our roads at that time would tell us, one of the big problems is the traffic loads on roads that were not built for the heavy traffic. They were just gravel and then they put blacktop on them. Well, and that's great. And as far as sealing, I seal my driveway and most people do. The reason they do that is to make it look good and to seal any cracks that might be in there. But the fact is, just to seal the streets around here, you know, to prevent damage, it's not going to do anything, even if you cover them with rubber. If you put a rubber sheet over the top of them, the water gets in because it's underneath already because of the way we have our ditches. And the water fills up in the ditches and it's migrated underneath. And then we take our garbage trucks and all the other trucks and even the residential areas that drive through here. Anyway, I think it's an overkill on what you're trying to get done here. And I would like to be able to see for the residents of this village to be able to see that on their website as to what you're really talking about doing. Well, you know, I, I realize you must have a start and a finish to everything. So if you had it, just a, a brief indication of where you're going to start and where you're going to finish for sidewalk bicycle path, that would be of interest to many of us residents. And I thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Okay, any other members of the public wish to address the board tonight? Remember to unmute yourself. Going once, going twice. All right, we have no cause tonight for an executive session. And we're down to item, oh, wait, before I say that, I did want to acknowledge, we did receive a note from a resident regarding chickens with regards to the hen permit application fee, advocating for a one time fee versus an annual renewal. This individual, Sharon Carmody, requested that we discuss it and vote on something tonight, which of course we cannot do as it's not on the agenda. But she references, now we'll, we'll circulate this out to the board as well. But she references communities that have one time fees. I'm sure this is not an exhaustive list. As far as, you know, this is certainly showing one point of view. But anyway, for, for the sake of the board, to be, to be aware, we'll, we'll circulate this, this email out because obviously the request can't be dealt with tonight, so. Put it in the, in the hopper. That being said, is there?
Mayor, why don't I offer a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion by trustee Jensen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sidik.
We have a second by trustee Addison and trustee Sidik. Roll call, please.
Gus.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
You Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Sidik.
Hi.
All right, thank you all so much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.